On behalf of everybody, I'll open the meeting of September. What is the date today?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, six-thirty. It's a Drake meeting between the Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, and the Town Administrator. So, we are in session.
Mr. Moderator, do you want to take the lead?
I'd be happy to, if you like. Let me just say that we had a wonderful meeting today with just about everybody who's involved in the setting up and the running of the town meeting on Saturday. And the town nurse was there, and we cleared everything through everybody. The chief police was there. You can tell everybody who was there, Tony, if you want. But it was very, very well thought out. The plan that's been laid out is meticulously laid out for the meeting. It seems to me that we're going to have a very safe and compliant with the guidelines meeting. And everything works in the whole very smoothly. And hopefully, we won't have too many people there, but we'll have the opportunity for anybody that wants to come as a citizen. And we'll have a good chance to keep the town working smoothly for the next year when we get done with the meeting. So I have to say, Tony and his team did a fantastic job of meticulously planning everything out and laying it forward and setting up physically and procedurally everything that will be done well.
Hey, Dave, I know we've talked about this before, but is there a quorum requirement?
There is a quorum. Well, I think the quorum has been reduced to fifteens from seventy-five.
Okay.
In accordance with the statute.
For the Finance Committee, I did attend the meeting today, and it's spot-on. And it is scheduled like a military operation. And, or, I mean, the only thing that's missing are dance steps, for gosh sakes. It's just unbelievable. So, and you think that we'll be, we'll be safe? I mean, seriously, there's nothing that that Tony's team could have done, anything else to make us more secure, sort of encasing us all in a bubble. But it's, it's very well laid out. And I guess we need to decide that. I guess part of the discussion tonight is when we, when we get there. But anyway, really, there was something else I want to tell you that particularly... Oh. And Tony, just so that we remember, remind everybody is that for the Finance Committee, the finders will be, will be there. We don't have to bring them with us.
Yep, we have fresh finders with all the most latest information for each of you and the Board of Selectmen. So unless you guys have, you know, your own material you want to bring, that, that will be there at your, at your individual desk.
David Connell, it's Bob Vander Slayce. I've always wondered, does Finance Committee and Selectmen count towards quorum?
Yes.
Yeah, if they're voters, they do. They surely do, yes.
Excellent. We almost have quorum just with them.
Well, that was kind of in the back of the minds of the folks that talked about the numbers. I have a feeling.
Yeah.
So we won't have a, so we won't have, I don't think we'll have a trouble getting a quorum on Saturday. And what we plan to do is do what we always do. We start right at twelve-thirty, and as soon as we have a quorum, we'll call things to order. And we've got a great team. We've got, we've got some folks that haven't had their feet wet yet. Some of the members of the FinCom, and we have a brand-new clerk. But the people we have are extraordinary, and I think we'll go very smoothly.
John Fulgham, what time is the Finance Committee meeting on, on Saturday?
We haven't, we haven't determined that yet.
Okay. Did you let me know? I'd probably like to attend.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, typically, we vote to, we meet early to kind of cover transfers, but we don't have to do that this year, right, Tony? So I guess we would just meet for... I'm not exactly sure why we would meet, but we can.
Because your fine folks would like to get together, I think.
Yeah.
Let's be safe, let's be safe and post a meeting for eleven or eleven-thirty.
How about we make it a little earlier, just in case? How about ten-thirty?
That's fine.
All right, hold on, wait a minute. So, so if we post for ten-thirty, that's a long time for us to mill about, two hours.
So what we've done in the past is we've, I think, just had, we've recessed, and then we've gone home and changed, and then come back.
All right, but the parking is going to be kind of at a premium, I think, so it might be... I'm planning on going over early, like eleven or eleven fifteen, something.
Okay, you want to, you want to make it?
John, can we make it?
Eleven-thirty?
Make it eleven-thirty.
Okay, we'll make it eleven-thirty, then. How about that?
No more hot dogs at the Council on Aging, you know.
That's true.
No, you have to bring your own sandwiches.
So, can I ask a question? You're planning on meeting in person or Zoom?
I think in person.
Okay.
At the field?
Where?
Why don't you guys plan to meet at the field, so this way you can be plenty spaced out? Don't have to worry about, you know, in a building or anything and limits like that. And you can do it right by the tent, you know, right outside the tent, or inside the tent.
You have all those tables, Tony. They could sit there.
Yeah. So, what do you plan on doing it as a location at Flash Road Park?
Yeah, then we'll figure it out. Sounds good.
The only reason I ask is the Planning Board signed up for a Zoom. I'm not sure who's they're using at ten-thirty, so just to be aware.
Okay, we'll plan on meeting in person, but thank you.
Welcome.
Good, well, I think, sorry, Jeff.
Just for those of us who are rookies, what's the dress code for the day?
Tux.
Hey, usually, actually, the, most folks, FinCom or otherwise, do kind of business casual. I always throw a tie on and a sport coat, but you don't have to wear your tux. It'll be all right.
I was going to say, it's still in the cleaner.
For any of you that like to wear heels, I would advise to wear flats on the dress.
No heels.
No heels.
Oh, that'll be great. I think this is going to be, we talked today about what a stellar group we have on FinCom. So much appreciated, everybody's been doing the great, the report came out great, and you guys are going to be terrific when we do it, when we do it before the voting populace. So...
All right, did you guys say I shouldn't wear heels?
No heels. I was going to say, no heels, Josh.
Nothing better mask, Josh.
You better be judicious where you wear it.
Hey, I'm told the height of fashion these days is if your mask matches your tie.
Oh, that's tricky.
I am not going to go full Nancy Pelosi. Nope.
That's probably a good idea. That way, you don't have to get your hair done either. That's a good thing.
Correct. Excuse me.
So why don't we go over the motions and see where we stand? I think, actually, I did it with Diane earlier this afternoon, and I think we're in good shape. But it looks like it's going to be a short procedure, and if everybody's ready, we can just... Hopefully, you got, all got a copy of the motions?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Moderator, you also have, I don't know if you can see, but Dan Skiff and Jeff Blake, Town Council, is on the call, too, if you have any questions for legal while you go through the floor.
I saw Dan there, and I took great comfort in his presence. For sure. Now, the first thing, well, Judy will do the annual resolution.
Right.
And so, is, are we at the situation where we are spending at the spending limit at the moment?
Yes.
So we're right there. So if anybody that wants to increase any of the articles under consideration will have to come up with a source for the funds with which they wish to increase it. So that's good.
Dave, does that, does that exclude the reserve funds?
Pardon me?
Does that include the reserve funds?
Uh, I, let's see.
Yes.
The reservation excludes.
It excludes the reserve fund, right?
As written, Mark, it does. This is Jeff Blake.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's how, that's how we remember it. Yeah.
Good, good. That's the way it is. Yeah, I see it now.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, also, as you may know, the moderator can't do this on his own, but the town meeting can. To the extent that somebody wants to go outside of this resolution in order of the meeting, they would be required to take another vote, like, say, on Article fifteen. They decide they want to try to go out. They would move to exempt, for lack of a better word, Article fifteen from the resolution. And if they got a, if they get a majority of the vote, they may be able to do that.
Luckily, nobody has ever brought that up so far, and I wouldn't think that that would be a likely thing to try and do at this point. But we shall see. We're always, life is full of surprises. Okay, motion for Article one is the salary and compensation plan, which is always interesting because over the years, so we have a, we have a bylaw that says anything that deals with the obtaining of... What the heck is? Anything dealing with the appropriation of funds for, for salaries of town employees has to be a paper ballot. And that has been honored often in the breach. The same clerk, one year, would say, "Well, this isn't appropriation. This is just setting the rate." And then, so there was, it's not necessary to have. And then the next year, she would say, "No, no, this is setting the stuff that's going to be awarded to the employees, so we should do it." The beauty of having the electronic voting is it won't really matter because it'll be a secret ballot, anyway. So hopefully, the electronic voting will work. But my view is that this is not appropriation. It's really setting the rate, so you don't really need to have that kind of a vote here as well. I don't know, Dan, you have a different view, or?
No, I agree with that. But like you said, it'll be ballot by default anyway, so we'll be protected in other case.
Right. And it's just a majority vote.
Right.
And so, and then Article two is the salary and compensation for elected officers. And that's the same situation, in my view. So it's a majority vote. Article three, the prior year's bills, we don't have anything as yet to raise on, I understand.
That's correct.
So then it's moot, and it will be indefinitely postponed. But if it weren't, it would be a four-fifths vote. Then Article four is the omnibus article. And I expect that we'll go through it in the usual manner, and then I've heard of one or two possible passes. And I don't know where, where they're going to come up with extra money, if there's going to be some, but hopefully, they'll be able to figure it out. And, but this is, if the voting system doesn't work, we'll have to do this by paper ballot. But Diane has arranged to have that possible, so we're in good shape there as well.
Is this one, I'm sorry, so is this one vote?
It could be.
It's a majority vote.
No, no, I mean, it's, the whole thing is one vote.
Yes, it's all, it's one article, one move, one motion. But if somebody, if somebody raises one of the parts, that may be taken up separately. It would be an amendment to the, it would be taken up as an amendment to the motion on the omnibus article.
Is John going to be reading all of the detail of this motion?
Yes, John is, and he's going to do a marvelous job of it, no question in my mind.
Oh, boy.
Brendan has done it in the past. He's done a great job, as you guys remember. But he's no longer on the FinCom, so it's going to go to someone else now.
Yep, it's going to work fine. And we all, we all watch this like a hawk, because it is easy to get a number reversed or something like that as you go along. So you can count on us to back you up, John, when we go through.
Or point it out, one or the other.
Well, it happens, but this is the most important article of the day, in my view. So I think it's, it would be great to have it done, and should be done easily. And as I say, it's majority vote.
And John has eagle eyes of his own.
Yes, we know that.
So the, the version that I'm looking at has kind of a note, a comment in the script. So I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that I'm starting or introducing the numbers correctly. So I can read that whole initial statement. "I moved that the town..." "Tran-" moved that the, the version I'm looking at looks a little cumbersome. It says, "Moved that the town to transfer the sum of dollars from free cash and raising appropriate..." I have a, I have...
I don't think you have the latest copy.
Yeah, it says, "I moved that the town to transfer the sum of from free cash." That's the one we see.
Yes, "and raise and appropriate the following sums of money for the fiscal year ending 2021." That middle part, to me, just looks, if that's the final script, it looks kind of cumbersome.
Seems like there ought to be a number in there, how much we're transferring from free cash.
Right.
Do we know that?
There's, there's a version that lists in certain buckets, numbers funded from free cash. I guess I could total all those up and then put that number in the blank.
I think the free cash is six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, isn't it?
I think it is, but I will double-check with Debbie and make sure that you have that number.
I'm looking on page twenty-five of the FinCom book.
Okay. All right, once I, I'll, I'll put the right number in there, and I'll read away.
Yeah, and there is a note at the end of it that you're not supposed to read, and that's...
Not supposed to what? Sorry?
There is a note at the end of it not to be read. "Total is twelve-million-eight-seventy-five-three-thirty-eight." I don't, I assume that that's purposely there, so you don't have to read that part. I would mark it so you don't...
Okay.
...lip over. I think the totals are all in the report book, so people will have...
Okay.
So again, that's a majority vote. It's a lot of reading, but John, you're up to it, so I don't worry about it at all. Article five is Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. It's appropriation and transfer and no borrowing, so it is also a majority vote.
Dave, it's Mark again. Am I mistaken, but isn't the omnibus a two-thirds because we're setting salaries?
Oh, it is. You're right. My gosh, that's right. That is right.
It's a, it's an annual. In the omnibus, you're, this is Jeff Blake. I believe it's a, it's a majority vote unless you're borrowing or transferring from stabilization for this. And Dan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Yep.
Isn't Mark right? We're appropriating for salaries.
Yeah, I see Police Department, all these guys.
Yeah, I mean, you guys, Jeff and Dan, you may be correct in that it may be a simple majority. I'm just, I think Dave will attest that we've always in the past required a two-thirds.
Yeah, and it's never been an issue. It's always been a two-thirds. We've always gotten two-thirds no matter what, anyway. I didn't expect any different.
Well, I think we ought to double-check it, because when Mark thinks it's a two-thirds, and I'm banned. I left my town meeting time booked at the Town Hall today, so, but it's back there somewhere. And if it's for salaries and it's supposed to be two-thirds, then we should definitely let them know that.
Yeah, I think that's the way it goes. That's the way we've done in the past.
Okay, then back to motion for Article five, which I think is, again, it's, it's all appropriation, so it is a majority vote.
Last year, Jeff Mustman made an issue of trying to determine why, in this case, the two-four-four-nine-nine-five-zero number didn't match the one-eight-six-four-five-four-six number. So I would expect him to step up again and ask to, ask that that delta be explained. And the answer revolved around transfers from the general fund to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and then back to the general fund. He didn't seem very convinced, or at least happy with the answer, so...
I think that was a debt shift, right?
Yes, it was. So what I expect, just, I wouldn't be surprised if he steps up again, so just don't be surprised.
Yeah, Tony, I think it's just a debt shift, the delta.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that's not a borrowing. It's just a debt shift.
That's right.
It's, it's, this is Jeff. It's the debt shift and the indirect costs that were already appropriated in the prior motion. So I think what, what I tried to do there with some of my comments was to just explain that. Because, yeah, Jeff Mustman did get up, and frankly, it is a little confusing because in this article, you're appropriating and paying, you're appropriating two-point-four and change, and, but only appropriating one-point-eight and change. So you needed to, you need to explain it.
Okay, well, hopefully, well, we'll see what happens, but it seems like it's, we understand it. And if we can explain that to whoever requests it.
We'll be ready to explain it if it comes up.
Okay, good. Article six, paved roads and sidewalks. Again, it's appropriate from retained earnings, majority votes. And then Article seven, appropriate for the operation of rubbish. Again, it's all with the, with the present fund, so it's a majority vote. And Article eight involves the possibility of raising by borrowing. Let's see what it says. "I move the town raising appropriate."
It's on Chapter ninety highway.
Yes.
And I've been fishing around in Chapter ninety, which is huge.
Yeah.
And I've been trying to find what specific, I don't know what you call it, part of Chapter ninety, article in Chapter ninety, this comes from. Chapter ninety lists everything from how you get your license to motorcycles to, I mean, it's just a whole long list.
Well, this is for highway construction and maintenance?
Right. So I'll keep fishing around, but I would like to see the actual, just have it for myself, the actual piece in Chapter ninety that this comes from.
Since this involves borrowing, does it require two-thirds? I don't believe it's borrowing, Tony, is it?
It is. I think, I, it is borrowing.
Raised by borrowing.
So what we do is, we do a short-term borrowing. I think it's a RAN. So what we do is we short-term borrow, and then we pay it with the Chapter ninety funds that we get from the state.
So we do a revenue anticipation note, then, a short-term borrowing. Okay, yeah.
So it says it's ninety-one thousand-six forty-three. Does that mean we get the exact, I mean, just in case someone asks, does that mean we'll get that exact amount back from the state?
That is, that is the dollar number that we pull from the governor's budget. So the, the, the final budget has not been finalized yet, so it could change. It could change. So we do... I have to ask, Barbara, it's a good question, like, how we had come up with the difference if, for some reason, we don't get as much back from, if we don't get as much in from the state. I'll have to ask that question for you.
Thank you, because I, I just want to be prepared if somebody, I mean, it was, it came up immediately to me when I looked at it, so...
Is it a majority vote, or is it a two-thirds?
Well, I'm going to treat it as a two-thirds because it involves borrowing as a procedural matter, but the motion itself is only for appropriation. But the article allows for borrowing, and Tony seemed to indicate that as a procedural matter, there is at least some short-term borrowing going on. So let's treat it as two-thirds for the safety sake. I don't expect there to be any difficulty. It's really kind of a standard that shows up in every year, so it should be good. Article nine is just approving the revolving accounts for recreation, basketball, sailing, tennis, et cetera. That's a majority vote. Article ten, appropriation of twenty-five thousand for post-employment benefits. Again, that's just a majority vote.
Oh, it buys because it's they're appropriating funds. They have to raise funds, so isn't that two-thirds?
Nope, they're appropriating the funds that are already there and funded from free cash. So it's just an appropriation, not a borrowing, and it's a majority. Article eleven, the stabilization fund from free cash, so that's also a majority. Almost noon. Twelve. So the, the article itself has borrowing, and this is the first time I've seen the ultimate motion.
Well, it sounds like it could be tentative borrowing. They may or may not need to, short-term.
No, it's authorized to borrow. This is two-thirds.
This is me too. This is borrowing. This is two-thirds.
Yep. Good. Article thirteen, fire capital, fire dispatch, that's an appropriation for the majority. Article fourteen is sewer infrastructure and involves borrowing, so it'll be two-thirds. And then Article fifteen and Article sixteen are both standard procedural things, and are a majority vote. I don't suppose I can talk Judy into saying that if they decide not to accept gifts, they could send them my way, but...
No, no, no. Although it's worth a shot, but no.
Can I just confirm, can I just confirm that on Article fifteen, it is indeed June thirtieth, 2020? Because we're putting this into last year, we had to approve. It says to continue the following standing committees to June thirtieth, 2020.
Just say twenty-twenty-one.
That should be twenty-twenty-one. That should be twenty-twenty-one.
It says twenty-twenty-one.
Good eye.
Twenty-twenty. The book says twenty-twenty-one. Yeah, the script I got says twenty-twenty, so I just wanted to...
Same here. Great, good eye, good eye. Way to go. I told you, I told you we got a fantastic FinCom here.
When do you hear what I've learned about slip lining for the sewer? Telling you.
Is that right?
Oh, I've been reading up, Dave.
Did you watch the video?
Well, it's supposed to last for fifty years. That's all... Well, it's supposed to last for 50 years, that's all I know.
That's right, and it better. I'm going to look around to see it.
I don't know much about slips, but I've never seen one that would last 50 years, but that's okay. I think we're going to have a great day and some fun, and I think we're, it's, it's pretty well straightforward, and I don't think there are any controversies here. If there are some, it'll just add some, some spice to the, to the day. And I'm very happy, A, that the selectmen saw to reduce the complexity to where it's at, and that, and B, that the FinCom has put together a great set of motions. And I think it'll be very straightforward, but we'll have a couple, a couple of chuckles and look forward to Saturday very much.
Hey, Dave.
I have a question. What, what are, would you plan to do or what are you thinking of doing if someone does raise a question about why there's nothing about eminent domain in here? Because that could come up. Someone could simply raise that question. Why is?
I, in my ultimate wisdom, would pass that question on to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
On the agenda.
It's, yeah, what kind of question do you mean, Barbara?
I just mean, what if somebody asks, because there's been, you know, lots of discussion around town and lots of things have been sent out over the, what if somebody asked straightforwardly, why is eminent domain not part of the articles? Why is it not being discussed at this meeting?
Because it's not, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the law.
I just think it's important to have, to be thinking about what if someone asks that.
How much?
My first, my first thought would be, you know, there isn't really like an open session portion of the meeting, right?
Oh, okay.
Following, we're following the, the warrant and motions are regarding the articles on the warrant, so it's not there.
Okay.
That being said, of course, anybody can ask any question. And I think the answer there is that, you know, we felt it was a topic of discussion that would call for a large group gathering. And due to the public health situation with the pandemic, we've decided to postpone that conversation until it's possible to have a large gathering. So I think that's just simply how we'll handle it, but I don't see, I've, I've been asked the question a couple of times now and I'm, I'm not sure where would, you know, if we're, if the motion is on paving borrowing, you know, I, I can't imagine like a conversation about something that has nothing to do with paving be a discussion that would occur, you know? It's, it's, it's not on the warrant, so I don't see it coming up. But I guess the question could be asked at any point.
Yeah, Barbara, that would be a point of order. And Dave has the ability to basically not give someone the floor. He doesn't have the right to be there or discuss a topic that's appropriate. And given that it's not any, a part of any article, someone might raise a point of order, pointing out that this isn't part of today's discussion. And the business meeting should go on without that discussion.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to have interrupted you. It's just that it sort of.
I mean, it's a good question, Barbara. It's, we've, we're liable to get many questions that are outside of the, the realm of this warrant, and it is up then to Dave to shut it down.
Right.
I mean, if we don't want a procedural approach, I think Tony's response is proper response. I mean, it's, that's specifically why we're having to scale down town meeting to, you know, keep, keep it a small group because we know it's an important topic. And that's, that's the answer. That's the real answer, right?
For the safety of the citizens.
The real answer is we want our citizens to be safe. That's exactly right. That's the answer.
Yep.
Yep, that's it. And I, you know, I think my, my inclination would be to give a short answer along the lines that Tony recommended and then shut it down because it's not really directed to any of the issues that are raised by the warrant. But I think you're better off to, to give a general explanation so that people have a little bit more understanding than, than just saying, well, you're out of order and sit down and shut up. So that would be my inclination.
I agree.
Yeah, good.
Dave, regarding Article Four, the omnibus article, Section 12, Article Two of our general bylaws deal with town meetings, and that particular section calls for a yes-no ballot regarding salaries, but not a two-thirds vote. So there would be a ballot, not a two-thirds vote. But traditionally in the past, that has gone over overwhelmingly. So I wouldn't expect it to be an issue either way.
So the only two, in that, following that, there's only two articles that require a two-thirds thing. Eight and 12. And four only is a majority.
And fourteen.
And fourteen.
Fourteen is?
Yep, fourteen.
Their capital.
Structure. We don't have that much money handy, Bill.
Short-term borrowing, okay, so it's fourteen too.
Yep.
Eight, twelve, and fourteen.
Yep. Yep, that's exactly right. So it should go fairly well. And I've often noticed in the past that if you get an unanimous vote, we won't have that this time with all these voting machines, but I'm sure we'll be all right. Good. So I think Barbara had a great point. Is there any other thoughts that we should be prepared for?
Coast Guard housing.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, same. That's the.
Same answer. I mean, same answer.
Yeah.
Dave, this is Dana. Can, can somebody open up the omnibus, Article Four, and, you know, make changes there in the course of the meeting?
So what happens, Dana, is we'll go through the omnibus, the omnibus and just read it. And if somebody has some point that they either want to have information on or they want to change, they'll shed out a pass. And then when we get done with the reading of the article, we'll go back to each of the passes and see what have, people have in mind. So I've gotten an inkling that somebody from the library wants to change some salary amount. And they're going to pass on the, I don't know which one it is, but they're, they're likely to pass on that. And if they do pass, because of the motion that Judy will read at the beginning of the thing, they'll have to come up with, if they want to add something to somebody's salary, they're going to have to come up with the money from somewhere. And that's the way it'll work. So they can, you can change things. You can change numbers, you can change wording, I suppose. But it's going to be, it would be in the form of a motion to amend the omnibus article in that section. And it would have to be submitted, the amendment voted on, and then the amended article passed, if it's amended. So, you know, I usually give copies of Town Meeting Time to all the new FinCom members, but I don't have them for you. But just reading a little bit, you know, we, we adopted that instead of Robert's Rules to govern the handling of our town meeting some time ago. But the beauty of that book is there's a lot of history there. And a lot of these rules came from the, from the ancient happenings of the, the town courts in the, in the early days before the revolution even. So there's a lot of sense in how we handle things. And I think if you have a chance to grab a hold of that, I'm going to try and get a batch of copies so everybody has one. And I think it would be great. I really, before, usually before the town meeting, I read it from cover to cover and I've got everything highlighted in it, so. But it really is, is helpful for our understanding in the historical context of how town meetings operate.
Dave, do you have the author of that book, Town Meeting Time?
Uh, I.
I would hear David. Richard Johnson, Benjamin Trustman, Charles Wadsworth. And it's on the, what edition is it now? It's, or on the, at least, at least the third, maybe the fourth.
Yeah, I think it's back from 2001. And it's available from the town meeting or New England Moderators Association. And I will get a batch of them so that we can have it. We have.
Looks like.
In town hall. And it's a great, it's a great work. And it has some great quotes that I've used in many other lawsuits all over the world. So it's good, it's a great book.
Thank you.
It's the blue one. The earlier one's a red one.
Yeah.
So for the, for those new members on the committee, I'm sure you've attended town meeting in the past, but what we'll do is, the moderator will open the meeting. And this year we will begin by having a general direction and guidance that I will provide to those in the audience about how to participate properly, all based on COVID compliance and social distance guidelines. And we'll be asking folks to, you know, unless they really need to leave, that they hold, that they wait until the final vote. And we have ushers that will guide people out of the meeting as well as guide people in the meeting. Participating residents at the center microphone will follow, will approach the microphone somewhat like a communion style. The, the, the middle aisle will actually be roped off. So folks will walk, will get up from their seat, walk to the outer edge of the tent, to the back, and then up through the middle. And once they speak, finish speaking, they'll go around the front and back into their seats. So there'll be a, a good amount of explanation around how we're going to conduct the meeting. We will then go to, back to the moderator, where the moderator typically announces the Citizen of the Year award. And then I believe from there, the moderator will go to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, who will announce the winner of the scholarship from the Board of Selectmen, the Town Scholarship. And then I think we get right into the resolution. Is that right?
That's right. Typically, there may be some other scholarships that are, occasionally we have other scholarships that are announced, but that's typically what happens.
Oh, we'll also have a, before we get into the resolution, we'll have a, a rehearsal of how to use the voting clickers. So there'll probably be a, you know, a survey question or something where, so people can get used to how, how does, you know, vote yes, vote no on the clicker before we get to the resolution.
Hey Julie, don't we usually give the cane to the oldest person in town?
That's done individually.
Right.
I usually go, go around and hand it specifically. We do a lot of pictures and stuff.
Right. We, we almost had it, we almost had it in place for the, the next person to receive it. And then COVID happened and we couldn't do it because this individual is among our senior population, obviously. But it's on my mind almost every day. We need to make it happen.
Okay.
Well.
Thanks for asking.
We don't do that, we don't do that at a town meeting. We do that individually and go and award it individually, so that would be good.
You're not giving it to me.
Not yet, not yet. Hopefully.
It would be your mother before you, Mark.
You know, I have to say, Mark, I can't say that hopefully I'll give it to you at some time because I'm older than you. So I, you can't get it until. Assuming the best happens, you can't get it until I'm done with it, man.
Could you announce it at the town meeting?
Uh, I'd be happy to if we have a name and, but, and then we could probably, you know, sterilize it and get it over to somebody, but that's not what we've done in the past.
We, we know who it is. We know who it is, but I, I'd like to actually present it to this person first before a town-wide announcement.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Good. Well, I think most things are covered and I think it's going to be a great day. And appreciate all the effort and all the consternation that's gone into this. It's incredible. What a, what an incredible year this has been. And just a simple thing that we, how great were the days when we just had a simple town meeting, which took a lot of work anyway, but to have to do it this way and to worry about the details and then go into the minutia and how to keep people from wandering into disease. You know, it's really been a phenomenal, phenomenal effort on so many, on Tony and his crew on the Selectmen, on everybody involved. It really has been something. And this is truly a historical moment coming up, I believe.
I have a question that Calanta asked today. Is the town meeting going to be televised or is it going to be a Zoom-type thing for those at home?
Good morning. The meeting will definitely be live streamed through YouTube. And we are running our final test. Right now it looks good that we'll be able to pull the live stream feed and push it through our local broadcast.
Oh, wonderful.
On the local channels, but we won't know 100% until the audio and visual equipment is actually set up on Friday. So we'll run our final test Friday, but absolutely it will be live streamed through YouTube.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
And there's no, there's no Zoom version. This is a.
Right.
So I saw something from Ken Corangelo, but it appears and disappears, but.
I answered it. His question was, are there any meal tax revenues included in the omnibus? And I responded to him. The answer is not this year. Department of Revenue guidance says not to estimate those revenues in the first year after adopting a local tax like the meals tax. And then even more so this year because of how the impacts of COVID-19 on local meals tax, they're advising us to hold off even more. So this year our revenues did not include last year's adoption of the meals tax. I can say that, you know, when we considered it last year, the estimate was anywhere from $40,000 to $60,000 in a typical year. No idea what it is, what it's going to be this year with COVID-19 impacts.
And Tony, you, I think you mentioned today you're going to do a town call tomorrow or Friday. I don't know which. But you might want to mention in the town call that we hope to have the video available on the local channels.
I will. I, I will. I'll, I'll do a robo-call tomorrow. There's a lot of information up. I'll be speaking pretty quickly in the call with, you know, my one-minute limit. But I will, I will include that as well as, you know, parking and requirement to wear a mask. And if you're, you know, if you're feeling sick or in quarantine, then you shouldn't come. And that you'd be able to watch online and that Saturday's metal recycling is postponed.
There's a lot of stuff to put in that call.
Wow. That'll be the one robo-call where I won't have the definite feeling that I wish I could reach back through the phone and get the throat of the person who is making the robo-call.
Hi. Listen, I, I announced my name right at the beginning to give you full opportunity to hang up.
Well, if any other robo caller comes in, I do hang up as soon as they can. All right, great. All right, super. Let's go have some fun.
Okay. I can have a motion for the Board of Selectmen to adjourn if it's appropriate.
I move that we adjourn.
We got four more now? We got a second? I'll second that. Any discussion on the favor? Aye.
Josh Hendrick, aye.
Mark, come on, aye.
Well, take a same motion for the advisory and planning committee meeting.
I move.
No move.
I'll second.
Folger on.
Aye.
Bender Slice, aye.
Enderslice, aye.
Charmy, aye.
Sahara, aye.
Brown, aye, there you go.
She, an aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Right, everybody.
I can thank everybody, see you Saturday. I'll be the one wearing a mask.
Take care.